I believe in limited government. I believe in efficiency of government. The answer is not always to go find more money and go tax our taxpayers more.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to Yam Hill County Truth Seeker, Conversations in the Spirit of Truth. Today, I'm pleased to welcome back Yam Hill County Commissioner Lindsay Burschauer. Thank you, Commissioner, for joining me again today.
Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome. Well, ballots are in people's homes and the primary election is less than two weeks away, and your reelection could be sealed by then. For myself, a little side note, I've heard just recently that 30% of Christians aren't registered to vote. And it may not be like that in Yam Hill County, but since Christians are to be the salt of the earth, giving flavor to our culture, everyone watching, listening right now, especially if you're a Christian, please register to vote. If you have not, and please vote. Okay, back to the matters at hand. Commissioner, do you have any opening thoughts you'd like to make sure get heard? And I've noticed recently you have renewed interest in drug reform, recent decisions that have happened on the budget and have gotten some notice in the newspaper, the resignation of the treasurer, and comments on your opponent's position or positions on a couple of things. I know that's four things, but if you need me to reiterate any of those, I will. But I just thought I'd let you open up about current things.
Well, I think that even though the county commissioner position is a not, quote unquote, nonpartisan position, that doesn't mean that it's not important to elect people who have very strong values. And I think that from the beginning, even going back to 2020 when I ran the first time, it's very important for taxpayers and voters to know who you're electing and why, and make sure that those candidates are very clear about their values. And I've been very clear from the beginning, I'm clear now that I'm, you know, I believe in limited government. I believe in efficiency of government. The answer is not always to go find more money and go tax our taxpayers more to expand services. That's not always the answer. We should be focused on efficiencies. I am a strong believer in private property rights. And a large part of my job is to make decisions on private property rights, whether or not you're allowed to build a doghouse in your backyard, or whether or not you're allowed to build a, you know, a mother-in-law suite or a home on your property. Those are really impactful. And I think just an overall position that Yam Hill County, when you look at us compared to other surrounding counties, so Clackamas or Washington County, our neighbors, we are much more affordable to live, it's much more affordable to live here than it is those counties. And there's reasons why. One of them is Metro. Metro is a regional government. It's one of only, I believe, two in the entire country. And it covers Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington Counties. And it adds a layer of taxation, not only on individual taxpayers, but also on small businesses. So we are literally on the border of that. And yet, we have pushed back over the years and we've said, we don't want to be a part of that. We don't want that extra layer of burdensome bureaucracy. And so the result is that it makes Yam Hill County more affordable to live in. And so I think having commissioners that have those values, and as we've seen in the past week or so, and I can talk about that more specifically, but with the budget issues, right? When you have a board of commissioners that does not seek to solve budgetary issues by looking outward and going to the taxpayers for more money, or going to find more money here and there, you have a board that's focused on efficiencies and how can we do the job better? And that requires some tough decisions. And I believe that a commissioner, when they're asking for your vote, or a candidate when they're asking for your vote, they should be very clear about how they're going to vote, right? You need to know that when you're, you know, filling in that bubble for a county commissioner, that I'm clear on this person's values and that if something comes up in the future about the Second Amendment, or some type of state law that comes down that is being pushed onto counties, or a tax increase, or, you know, a certain property rights issue, I'm confident that this person is going to vote most likely the way that I would want them to, because I'm clear on their values. And so I think that has become, it's become my message because a lot of people back in 2020 didn't know what a county commissioner did. You know, when I ran the first time, they were like, well, I don't even know what that position does. And so I've spent a lot of time educating, here's how I actually intersect with your daily life. And now that I have opponents that are not clear on their values, they're sort of hiding behind this, you know, this veil of, well, I'm a nonpartisan. That means I'm not offensive to anybody, but it also means I don't stand for anything, right? I mean, they're kind of hiding behind this veil of a safe word called nonpartisan. And the risk for voters is that you're going to vote for somebody who may vote against the way you would want them to, because you just don't know, because they're not being transparent about it. So it's interesting to see how my campaign has shifted from four years ago, where I was really doing a lot of educating to voters about what a county commissioner does, to this time, which is, yeah, I've been very vocal over the past four years about where I stand. And we can talk about COVID, but there's a reason for that. You deserve to know, right? You deserve to know where your county commissioners are going to fall. So it's kind of interesting to see the way that the two campaigns are different.
So did you want to address your particular stance on current drug reform? Measure 110 and then the follow-up after that kind of got rewritten?
Yeah, so I didn't support Measure 110. If you talk to-
Did not? You say you did or did not?
I did not.
Okay.
And it basically legalized hard drugs, right? The possession of hard drugs. I did not support that. If you talk to our judges, they'll tell you that when Measure 110 passed, we kind of lost the mechanism or the hook into individuals that would force them into a program that would be helpful for them, that would pull them out of drug use and put them on potentially a better path. It also removed the hook of accountability. And so in the last legislative session, House Bill 4002 passed, and it was an attempt to sort of bring back that hook. Only, you have people who truly believe that jail is not the answer to someone who is addicted to hard drugs, right? And we can spend hours debating that. But what House Bill 4002 does is it, it kind of marries the two philosophies. It says, okay, we're going to make possession of hard drugs a crime again. It's a class U misdemeanor. However, the intent of the legislature is not to just push a bunch of people into jail. It is to try and create and incentivize programs that get people into addiction treatment and recovery, which is fine. Yam Hill County has been very pro rehabilitative when it comes to those programs. We have one of the oldest drug courts in the state, so we've done a lot of that work already. The challenge for us is how do we implement the changes of House Bill 4002 into our systems currently as they are and still hold people accountable? Because we still want that accountability piece. And so I've been meeting with our DA Brad Berry and our incoming DA Kate Lynch, and then, you know, members of the Sheriff's Department and local police chiefs and our Health and Human Services Department to really put all the brains around a table and say, okay, how are we going to implement this in a way that's responsible and has some measurable results to it? And really push towards the goal that we all have, which is, we would love to see people get clean. We would love to see people go through recovery and pull themselves out of this habit so that they can be productive members of society. I think that's everybody's goal, whether you believe in sort of the harshest form of punishment or you believe in rehabilitation, the goal is the same. So how do we marry the two? And so Yam Hill County has told the state that we will be applying for funding. And the funding from House Bill 4002 is based on a formula, so we don't really have much of a choice there. It's roughly just under $500,000 that we would be receiving, but we have to submit a plan to the state to say, here's what we're going to do with it. And so over the past month or so, that's what this work group has been doing. We've been meeting together to put the brightest minds, you know, around the table and say, how can we do this in the most cost-effective way? But also have accountability, because oftentimes, as we see with the state and these programs that they roll out, there's very little accountability. So how do we make sure that we have it? We're not worried about everybody else, but we want it. And how do we sort of also focus on the fact that we know that if we're trying to funnel a bunch of people into recovery, you have to have the services available for them? If they don't exist, then you're setting people up for failure. So we are also, at the same time, focused on, okay, how do we get a sobering center? A detox facility, I mean, it's referred to in different ways, but we need that here locally too. Because currently, our treatment providers are literally driving people from here to Baker City to drop them off and spend time in a detox facility, and that's just not feasible. It doesn't work anymore. We have too much of a need. And so we're looking at how we can dedicate resources from the county to partner with other people to make that happen, so that we aren't bottlenecking people into a system that isn't going to work for them, because we just don't have the expanded services. So that's where it stands right now. I expect that something will come before the Board of Commissioners very soon, because we do have to approve the plan and the grant submission. And then it's all due by July 1st, so it's going to come very fast. House Bill 4002 goes into effect since September 1st. So that's one of our struggles is, you know, how do we implement this as quick as possible? And I just love that all of our department heads and elected officials, county leaders, have been at that table. We've been meeting pretty much every two weeks to try and figure this out and get it done before September 1st. So it's pretty amazing to see.
It is, and there are a lot of people who've been working hard on behalf of individuals with needs like that in the community for quite a while. And I know you've met with them, so the fact that you've already got, hit the ground running or already had done prep work, and now there's this opportunity to ramp it up, it's exciting. Changing the subject a little, the, did I read there was a $600,000 cut in the budget?
So we just went through budget deliberations or meetings. I don't know, I guess we call it meetings. But it's basically a three-day period. We do it once a year, and typically it's at the end of April, early May. And we convene our budget committee. So the budget committee is comprised of the three commissioners, and then we have three lay members, citizen lay members, that serve, and they decide not only the, decide and vote and deliberate on the county budget, but they also decide and deliberate on the compensation levels for elected officials. So that's kind of their job. It's two-part in some ways. And so we have three individuals in the county who are, oh gosh, I think they've all either owned businesses or run, you know, run businesses. And so they're very, you know, strongly rooted in the private sector. They have a vast amount of knowledge when it comes to, you know, managing employees and just the pressures of a business. And really, that's what county government is. It's just a very large, you know, sort of upscaled version of a business. We have seven, almost 700 employees. So they have extremely valuable input and in a different perspective. Sometimes it sort of gets us out of our bubble of, you know, this is how county government operates. And sometimes it's very slow and not very nimble, and they sort of pull us out of that and help us look at the bigger picture. So we convened last week, and it's a three-day process. We go through every line item of the budget. And we typically, over the years, and I've been on the budget committees, and I started on the budget committee before I was a commissioner, so that was back in 2019, 2018, 2019. Our practice has been to really protect our contingency funds. So we have several different contingency funds. We have a PERS contingency fund, right? PERS is Public Employee Retirement. We have some money set aside there to offset the increasing cost of public employee retirement. We have different sets of funds that we sort of set aside to make sure that we can weather the storms and remain, you know, relatively stable. I don't remember a year where, at least since I've been around, that we've had a general fund balance that was so low, starting out right off the bat. Typically, we have a, we have a rule, it's not, it's not, you know, set in anything, but it's a rule that we don't go below the million-dollar mark on our general fund discretionary. So we like to keep a buffer in there of about a million dollars in case something happens during the year, right? If we have an unexpected loss of contracts, or we, you know, the legislature suddenly changes and pulls back marijuana funds, or, you know, some other change that happens that impacts our budget in an immediate sense, we want to make sure that we've got some wiggle room and we can, we would be okay. We wouldn't just have to, you know, all of a sudden lay off people. That's not what we want to do. And so we've had this rule that our general fund discretionary sits at at least a million dollars. Well, we started out this year at $1,077,000. We literally had $77,000 to sort of play with when it comes to backfilling some of our departments and making sure that they didn't have to lay off individuals. That was really eye-opening, and it was in part a result of the impact of collective bargaining agreements. We've had a couple of them sort of come online, right?
I was going to say that, because the vast majority of most budgets in government are personnel. And you recently had great success working things out with one segment of the county, right? But that, it's great for them, but then suddenly puts you teetering on the edge.
Sure, and we have five different unions we have to sort of contend with. So those are five different contracts, and the AFSCME contract did come online for this budget. The Sheriff's Teamsters contract also came online, just not, maybe not as publicly. And so we were dealing with the impacts of those, and that absolutely eats into that beginning balance that we start with at the beginning of the year, which, you know, we have to use to contend with every other budgetary pressure. And so it was a very uncomfortable position to be in, because we really didn't have a whole lot of funds to pull from. I mean, if you look at the very slim margin on the general fund discretionary, and then you look at all the other funds, none of those other funds are replenishable. They don't, there's no revenue source that continues to feed into those funds. Once you spend them, they're gone. And so it was a, was not a good position to be in. And this is despite the fact that our revenue does go up every year, right? And I think that's kind of a, it's misconstrued in the paper that we're starving for revenue. We're not starving for revenue. Our revenue goes up every year by 3% to 4%, and our taxpayers pay their taxes for the most part on time. We have a very high tax collection rate. So the problem is that our personnel, like you mentioned, our personnel costs are going up even higher. And you have to find ways to absorb the impact. And I've always hated that, you know, the, I guess, the Public Employee Union philosophy is that it's this philosophy of, well, we need these contracts, right? We need these increases, and if that means that the, you know, last hired is first fired, then I guess that's what that means, right? It's almost like they, it's a cannibalization of their own people, because they need increases. And so-
Believe me, I've seen that many times, so I-
Yeah, I've always hated that. It just, it feels so demoralizing. And I think the challenge for us is that we do have vacant positions on the books that we are funding year after year, and we sort of have these steady vacant rates, vacancy rates. So if we're looking at a situation where we have to make some cuts to personnel, I'm going to focus on vacancy rates, right? I'm going to go to those vacant positions and say, okay, well, if nobody's here and we can't fill this position year after year, then we're going to cut it. If it means that I'm going to keep someone, a real person, a filled position over here, so that that family is not impacted, that's always where I've erred on the side of. It just happened to be that this, in this cycle, you know, HHS is historically taken a percentage of our general fund discretionary money. It's not normal necessarily. There's counties that don't do that, because HHS is funded primarily by state and federal funds. So the vast majority, 97% of that department, is funded by money that comes in from the federal and state governments, and we just, you know, sign off to accept it.
I did not know that. That's good to know. It puts things in perspective, for sure.
Yeah, for sure. And the board has had a historical, or a history of supplementing that with general fund discretionary money. However, if the rest of our departments are struggling or starving, and they don't have this sort of revolving door of state and federal grant money, then we have to look at what's best for the whole of the county, right? You can't, we can't have a clerk's office that is running on a skeleton crew that can't service 109,000 people while HHS is very flush and whole, right? I mean, it just doesn't work. My job is to make sure that there's a balance. And so that's, we made some tough decisions. We did decide to pull away roughly $600,000 from our HHS discretionary allocation and move it back over to the assessor's office, to the clerk's office, to the sheriff's office, to make sure that they were whole.
So it wasn't the cut, it was a reapportionment?
It was a reapportionment, and where you're pulling from in HHS is we gave a directive, literally in our motion. We gave a directive that, number one, that money's going to come from vacant positions that have been on the books that have no real person filling them. And number two, we don't want anything associated with veterans, our veteran services, to be impacted, because a portion of that allocation did go to veteran services. So we made sure we were clear that our veterans are protected, and we're going to go after, you know, vacant positions, to make sure that there wasn't an actual cut to our personnel. So tough decision to make, you know, no department wants to hear that they, that they are receiving less money. However, I think my job, my job is to look at the sort of what's good for the whole of the county. And, you know, our budget committee, actually, this idea sort of came from one of our budget committee members who clearly understood that their job was to look at the whole of the county and what's good for the county. And when you have so much dedicated revenue going into Health and Human Services, and yet other people over here are really hurting, because, you know, recording fees are down, right? Because the economy is slowing down, and people aren't buying homes, and they're not refinancing, and all of that. You got to make sure that you know how to keep some consistency and stability over here in the meantime. And so it was a very well-thought-out process. You know, and again, not easy decisions. I really, I struggle with some of the, you know, our treasurer resigned, and she stated that one of her reasons was that the budget committee process was a, quote, disaster. I really struggle with that, because she sat there on Zoom and watched the entire thing for three days, and she knows darn well it was not a disaster. It was very meticulous and well-thought-out, and I just take offense to that. You know, these folks are taxpayers, they're private citizens. They come in and they give up three days of their life, and they call out from work, right? To do this as a service to all of Yam Hill County. And it just really, it was disappointing to see, because we do have to make tough decisions sometimes, and this is definitely one of those times. And unfortunately, I don't think that the larger sort of economic future right now in this country is very positive. So I hope that next year, we don't have to make additional difficult decisions. But honestly, I'm worried at this point, right? I think we avoided some pain this year, but I hope that we have set ourselves up next year for less pain, because we didn't kick the can down the road.
Well, good for you. I know it's difficult, and I appreciate the pain that you're going through. And I think perhaps the private sector knows even more so that, I mean, you just, people in government on the local level may be thinking, well, we could just operate like the federal government, which just continues to print more money and make things happen out of nothing. But it's just not that way on the local scene. And I appreciate the way that the county has, over time, kept a large amount in reserve, so you can keep the essential things safe. I realize we're running out of time. We had a bit of a late start for this interview, and then there's some time constraints on your end. So I'm trying to, in my mind, figure out a way to wrap this up. So I might just do it with a reference to COVID, because it is one of my favorite topics to rant about. You, I was going to go through your entire history of, or just let you highlight from your website, the things that you've accomplished in 2021, 2022, 2023. But you jumped in when COVID was deep and we're having to learn to get us all nimble and making adjustments in many different ways. And there were some policies that you, you and the board, or at least two out of three, wrote some letters and some statements, and I'd like you to just kind of summarize what those were. But before I do, I just want to make a reference to something that maybe people don't realize is happening, and that is that the World Health Organization is planning to, within a very short period of time right now, and this does relate to Yam Hill County, so bear with me, to sign a treaty, so that if there could, should happen to be a new worldwide scam, let's say pandemic, come our way again, they would be in charge of making decisions. They would basically take away US sovereignty and essentially give the World Health Organization, which is directly related to the United Nations, and give them the ability to declare public health emergencies of international concern, and expand the WHO's authority over member states, that would include us if President Biden signs that. And I believe COVID was, back in 2021, a practice session by the same organization, so that certain entities who want world control, here I go, and now are potentially planning on doubling or tripling down on it again. Because, here's how it works, and just a side note, there were 44 United States senators who wrote a letter to Biden saying, "We do not want you to make this agreement with World Health Organization." Now, it may not happen, but it is very scary that it's even being considered. So CDC is affected by the policies of the WHO, and then the Oregon Health Authority is affected by the CDC. And finally, the Oregon Health Authority tells our county health director, who is currently Lindsay Manfrin, what to do. And way back in 2021, I was very concerned. It didn't seem like things were right, because I was- It didn't seem like things were right because I was getting news from different sources than others. I wasn't buying all the statistics in the newspaper, and I still don't because I was looking at international statistics. Uh, I just, I just didn't buy it, but it seemed like we were just, we're going to follow the orders and do not question us. And I'm afraid that that could happen again. So um, is that any, some of that kind of relate to this types of things that you uh, and the rest of the board wrote uh, in response to COVID mandates? Would you like to just kind of summarize what they were about?
Yeah, it absolutely relates. I mean, we have, we have people moving into our county over the past four years that are moving here because of what Mary and I did during COVID. They were watching and listening and they heard local leaders standing up against that government overreach. And they felt like they were safer here than they were in Washington or Clackamas or Marin, or um, Multnomah County. So and that's what, and that's, I've, I've talked about that in my campaign is that ultimately for me, that is the um, the most satisfying form of endorsement, right? Like, those people want to be here because they feel more free here. So um, the underlying, the common denominator is the loss of local control. And so um, when I came in, in twenty, in January of twenty twenty one, we were in the throes of the pandemic still. The governor still had her emergency orders that were in place. Um, which basically, you know, the entire state was on lockdown. There was no local control. Any of the people that you put into office, whether it was on a city level or a special district level or a county level, or even a state level, state representative or state senator, none of those people had any control over their immediate constituents. All of that was wiped out when the governor put her emergency order into place.
And that's just not how it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be local.
That's the common sort of denominator in all of this, right? It's, we, I hope people understand the danger of the loss of local control because that's, we saw how it played out. I mean, we, the way I describe it is it felt like I was gearing up for battle every single week. And when I say that, I mean, the, the county commissioners met, we meet every week. We don't ever take a break. It's not like the legislature. We are in session, in board session every week. And so it felt like, you know, we were gearing up for battle. We were having, you know, constant communication from our local businesses, our restaurants who were shut down, begging for us to fight for them, do something, right? We were in this, um, that arbitrary, if you remember, that arbitrary risk level where everybody was, you know, waiting to see if their, your, their COVID numbers were down below a certain level and then they could reopen at, at whatever level. It was, it was just ridiculous. It was not based on any form of science, by the way. Um.
Right, people being fined for somebody in their business not having a mask over their nose.
Absolutely, absolutely. And our, and our schools were shut down at the time. Um, you know, we, gosh, there was a directive for healthcare workers that they had to have the vaccine no matter what. And we fought back against that and we said, we told our county employees, nope, not here. You're not going to lose your job over your own personal healthcare choice. It's, it's not happening and we're going to protect your civil liberties. And
Was there some pushback on that, like from health folks saying, how can you do that? You're putting us all at risk or?
Yeah, you know, ironically, it came from our largest union, uh, the largest union that just endorsed my opponent. And I think this is really important because at the time, it was Commissioner Starrett, myself and Commissioner Casey Kula. And when we passed the protection of civil, civil liberties for county employees, we all three voted for it. And it passed. And then within a day, Commissioner Kula was asked to rescind his vote, and he did the following week. And I think that that is a really good example of having commissioners elected who are not clear and transparent about their values, right? That was a directive and a push that came from not only the union, but from progressives in our, in our county. And he folded to it. And I worry that, you know, my opponent is going to be the same way, right? You, you have to stand strong against that stuff. We knew why we were doing it. We knew what the core values were. And it didn't matter that people were threatening us. Um, I sent an email after that to all of our, our entire workforce. I think it was the first time I'd ever done that, where I've actually sent an email out to our entire workforce. And I just said, as so long as you work here under this board, you are not losing your job. I don't care what the state of Oregon says. And there was immediate pushback from, from our largest union. And that's the kind of stuff that I think that voters need to make sure when they're casting their vote. You, you got to know that the person you're giving your vote to is going to stand strong against that kind of stuff. Because it was wrong. And hindsight is twenty twenty, but it, we were right to uphold the civil liberties of our county employees.
Well, I think it was one of the worst times in, in America and world history. And just having somebody at the government level standing up for us. Because you and I know there are different sources of information out there. And if you just only get your information from this narrow band, you miss out on things that are probably a lot more accurate. And I believe you must have had a different source, just like I did, because I was digging and I just felt like something's wrong here. We're doing the wrong thing. This is, this is, this feels like evil. You don't have to agree with me on that, but. Um, so I, I'll just tell you, I appreciated the protection and and hope that you would do so in the future. This is a, uh, an election year. It happened in twenty twenty because there was a presidential election. I believe it was connected on purpose. And I believe it's happening again in twenty twenty four for the exact same reason. It hasn't quite happened yet. They're trying to, but people are fed up with it, so. Um, yeah, we need that. Now, I will admit, I do think that um, your opponent is probably more similar to you than, than not on that, or at least he has stated or made it sound like he might be. I don't know how it will turn out in the, in the final, in the final count. As you say, you could get influenced by people and could potentially change, but I don't see you changing.
No, I will continue to support local control and protect civil liberties. It's just, you have to know what your core values are because that was an incredible headwind that we faced and just pure chaos every week when it went during COVID. And if you don't have that, that base and that island of core values that you can hold to, uh, you're going to make bad decisions. And honestly, I don't regret a single decision that we made. It was all done and rooted in protecting constitutional liberties. And I don't regret a single decision we made. It was the right decision.
It's one for the history books. When we look back, at some point, the hundred, the truth will be a hundred percent out. And we'll know that it was the right thing to do. How can people support your campaign in these next few days?
Well, uh, we have quite a few sign waving rallies and volunteer efforts. We're doing phone banking and texting and door knocking. Um, I have a convoy through the county that we're going to do on May eighteenth, which will be really fun. Come out and bring your car and we'll, you know, do the window paint and decorate and everything and do a convoy through the county. So all of that stuff is announced on my Facebook page. Um, but if you'd like to volunteer as well, you can go onto my, my website, which is lindsayforyamhillcounty.com. And there's a volunteer form there and that will connect you to my team and they'll get you signed up and plugged in, so. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, no problem. God bless you and your family and your work. Commissioner Burshour, thank you for joining me.
Great. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.